We left executive session and now we're in public session. This is a regular board meeting of the select board for January 25th, 2019. At the beginning, I want to read a statement pursuant to this board's authority under regulations 940 CMR 29.10-8. Board member Nancy Heller will be participating remotely via telephone due to being out of state. There is a quorum physically present and all votes taken will be recorded by roll call. So... That's what the lawyers tell us to read. So, starting off... Are there any announcements from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez.
Let's see. First, tomorrow, we are lucky it was rained out today so I get to announce this about tomorrow, there will be a community barbecue. It's the annual Trustman Egmont 86 Dummer barbecue hosted by the Brookline Housing Authority. It's going to be at 5:00 PM over at the Trustman Courtyard just behind 86 Dummer Street. All are welcome. Nice little barbecue coming up. And my phone tells me it will be 73 and sunny. So, I'll be there. I hope you'll join me. And then just one other. Last night I had the pleasure of going to the Pride event at 100 Center Street, Dinesh, and to serve some cake and speak with some of the folks there. And just has me thinking, especially this Pride Month, about all the elders out there who fought the good fight so we could have the progress that we have today and even understanding that there's still much more work to go. So, just much love to them.
Mr. Franco.
I just wanted to make sure the public was aware that we're about to go on our summer schedule, so we're going to meet less frequently over the next few weeks. I think twice in July, once in August. So, we'll be here, but we're going on a little bit of a summer hiatus.
Ms. Hamilton, do you have any? Ms. Heller, do you have any announcements?
No. I have no...
Okay. So, I have one announcement. I just want to report that I attended a really great program that the police department puts on called the Citizen Roll Call on June 19th. The focus was the crisis intervention training that all police officers, I think all, have taken, including de-escalation tactics that apply in terms of crisis intervention situations as well as any other interaction between police and citizen. One of the things I took away was the importance of having educated police because they have to really think through difficult intense situations in the moment and make the right decisions based on their training, not on their fears. And the training really made that point very, very clear. And I think most of our police officers have at least a bachelor's degree and that, you know, is a good sign. So, any other comments? I don't hear any. Public comment. This is a period for citizens to speak about issues either on the agenda or not on the agenda. I see that a couple people want to talk about e-scooters and we're having a presentation by the Spin Scooter Company later on. And if people are here to make comments about the Spin program at that time, they can make their comments in connection with the presentation or you can say whatever you want to say now. So, Mr., it looks like Mort Yassim?
Mark.
Mark?
Marty.
Oh, Marty. Okay.
Yes. I speak to you tonight as a Brookline and Massachusetts citizen and a father and a grandfather. I have distributed to each of you a relevant section of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 90, Section 1E, Motorized Scooters Operation Regulations. I do not know whether you were aware of Chapter 90, Section 1E, at the time that you approved the trial of the electric scooter program here in Brookline. Chapter 90 makes clear that the Bird and Lime scooters being used in this trial, as currently configured, simply are not legal because they lack the turn signals required by the law. When each of you took your oath of office upon being selected, elected to this select board, you made a solemn commitment to uphold the laws of the common wealth of Massachusetts. You did not take an oath to uphold the law except in circumstances when you did not want to uphold the law. Presumably, the law in question was not written frivolously, but rather in consultation with safety experts who understood that turn signals are fundamentally important to the safe operation of motorized vehicles on the streets of Massachusetts' towns and cities. And I have difficulty understanding your failure to consult with Brookline's Town Council as to the legality of operating these vehicles on our streets. Given the documented epidemic of serious traumatic injuries associated with electric scooters, I am also taken aback that any of you may truly believe that the trial that you have authorized overrides the genuine concern for the lives of the operators of these vehicles as well as those who share the roads with them. As members of Brookline Select Board, you are leaders of our community. The respect or disrespect that you show for the law is of the greatest importance and has reverberations far beyond any specific issue. I therefore urge you to promote respect, not disrespect, for the law you have sworn to uphold and to immediately suspend this trial program until such time as these vehicles are brought into compliance. I thank you for your time.
Okay. Mr. Ray Schwartz, please.
I read in the tab that somebody on the select board said that the law was going to change. So, I spoke to Jonathan Katz, he's the general counsel for the Joint Committee on Transportation. There is nothing being done. They are taking things, so I would like to find out who told you that it was changing because the general counsel disagrees. So, whoever told you that is mistaken. Number two, you're breaking the law. And when I talked to Bernard, he said, "Well, he's not worried about it because the worst that can happen for liability is the $100,000 limit." I spoke to another lawyer who said, "Being that you willingly are breaking the law, that the state is not going to award you protection when you deliberately have broken the laws that you are sworn to uphold, so that $100,000 will not work. And any good, smart, tort lawyer will take you to court and clean your clock." And because you yourselves have... And you're laughing because you know there's good lawyers out there that'll do it.
No, I'm laughing because you distorted what I said, but go ahead.
Yeah. Well, you said that...
Just continue.
Okay. Next. How does this... What your trials have done, how does that work with ADA? Are you in compliance with ADA? No, you're not. So, what's going to happen is, I called up... In Washington DC, I called up ADA. I talked to them and I told them, "Remember, handicapped people are a protected class. Sidewalks should not have impediments to inhibit the legal rights to safely walk. Neither scooters nor bicycles should ever be on a sidewalk. It threatens the safety of several special classes." ADA is just an organization that talks to you, explains the laws, et cetera. They have no enforcement powers. So, they have told me and I have called the FBI. The FBI have left a message. What happens with the FBI is they'll call me back. I will tell them what I've got. They will take a look at it. They will ask me to send all the documentation I have, which is articles on the tab, which is the last meeting that you had. They will probably... They will then decide whether they're going to proceed. If they proceed, then all of you will get letters and then the council can be... But you're not in compliance. And interestingly enough, if somebody leaves a scooter on somebody's private property, that's not legal also. And they're leaving the scooters everywhere. So, that's my statement, so...
Thank you. Moving along. Question of approving minutes of May 28th, 2019 and June 4th, 2019. Has everyone had a chance to read them? Edits, comments? I have some edits. Okay. So, move approval of the minutes for May 28th, 2019 and June 4th, 2019 as edited. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. Okay. Question of approving extra work order number three in the amount of $235,000 with Pasala Waste Management of Massachusetts in connection with curbside collection and processing of single-stream recycling. Mr. Papa Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner of the Department of Public Works. If you recall back in May, just prior to town meeting, I went before you for approval of a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $275,000 to cover the deficit that is now incurred in our recycling contract with Pasala Waste Management. This was due, among other things, to change in market conditions primarily from the loss of the Chinese market for recyclable products in the United States. As of... Through the month of May, we have now incurred... We have projected a deficit through the end of the fiscal year of about $325,000, of which we were prepared to cover about $50,000 of that through the surpluses in the Department of Public Works, hence the reserve fund transfer of $275. We're asking right now for an extra work order of $235,000. We have bills incurred through the month of May that only leaves June. We've estimated the bill for June and this is what we think we'll need to finish the fiscal year. So, this extra work order, which is extra work order number three, if you would recall, this contract was awarded in fiscal year 16 and it was a five-year contract beginning on July 1st. We will be now in the final year of that five-year contract and sometime this fall we'll begin negotiations or renegotiations on a new contract going forward. And we're hoping that things will change a bit more favorably in the recycling market or keep our fingers crossed. So, right now I'm asking for your approval on the extra work order so that we can pay the final bills for this fiscal year.
So, any questions? Move approval of extra work order number three related to curbside collection and processing of single-stream recycling. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller. Ms. Heller, are you still there? Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Okay. All right. That was a aye. Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you on the next one, too?
I have the next four items. The next four items are annual contract renewals. And I'll go through them quickly. I know you want to get going in the summer agenda, so I'll get started real quick. The first contract is Contract Public Works 20-03. It's key to keep the trees and related work. The whole bidder is Northeastern Creek Services of Cranston, Rhode Island, and the amount is $399,420. Northeastern is our current contractor and they were successful as the whole bidder on the next three-year renewal. We do these in three-year blocks subject to approval each year. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I can go through all of them if you'd like.
Sure.
The second one is Contract PW-20-4, pavement markings, and this is with Markings Incorporated of Pembroke, and that's an amount of $101,830. This contract includes about $7,000 to $8,000 that we incur for police details as the work is being done. Markings Incorporated is the whole bid for this three-year contract. The third one is Public Works 20-02, repair and installation of chain link fences. We're asking that we award three contracts on this one for the low bidder and the subsequent second and third bidder. Excuse me. The primary contract will be with Rad Corp. of Rockland, Massachusetts. The second contract or the secondary contract would be Green Acres Landscaping and Construction of Lakeville, Massachusetts. And the third would be Steel Co., Chain Link Fence Recycling Company of Needham. The total amounts would be $128,310. We award three contracts to all the bidders, a contract to all the bidders in various amounts to give us more flexibility when we need work done to allow us to go to second or third contractors. And the fourth and final contract is PW-20-01. That's for school ground maintenance. That's with Park Landscape Associates of High Park and the amount is $115,320. And that again is the bidder for the last year. So, those are the annual contract renewals for this year.
Hey, any questions?
Just brief... Can you walk us through, just in terms of... We put a bid process out there. We get the bids. Do we always select the lowest bid? Are there other factors that go into selecting?
When we take bids on any of our contracts, we thoroughly vet the apparent low bidder. We check their calculations. We check their bid prices, their extensions. We check their references, their work history. Many of them have worked with us before, so we have, of course, our own work history. And then we make a determination if everything is in order. The town council then goes through the documents and if it's in order, then yes, we would award to the low bidder. There are circumstances where we do not award to the low bidder, if any of those conditions aren't met, if there are mistakes in the bids, or if there are some questionable items that come up in a reference check or perhaps standard work in other communities, then we have on occasion not awarded to the low bidder.
Okay. And we're pleased with the folks that have done the work before?
Yes. All of these folks have done work for us in the past.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Move approval of the four contracts. PW-20-03, PW-20-04, PW-20-02, and PW-20-01. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
6G.
6G, too. Question of approving the following transfer within the Department of Public Works appropriation from permanent full-time to storage rentals and from education training to gasoline and diesel in the amount of $22,000 for the first and $16,000 for the second. And then from office supplies of $1,000 to diesel for $1,000. Mr. Papa Sturgeon.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are just... All of these are just year-end transfers to cover deficits, particularly going in gasoline and diesel. The first item is to cover a deficit in storage rentals. This is related to IPS meters and it's an increase in the additional cost for the cloud-based management system, communication system, and the per-transaction gateway credit card fees associated with those additional meters. Excuse me.
Any questions? Move approval of the transfers indicated. Mr. Franco. Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy your summer.
Well, thank you.
Off season.
You, too. So, question of approving a transfer request within the town council department's appropriation from permanent full-time, $10,000, and claims and settlement, $17,900, and conferences, $1,800, to general counsel, $29,700, and office supplies, $1,700, to subscriptions, $1,700. Ms. Murphy.
Good evening, Jocelyn Murphy Town Council. Toward the end of the fiscal year, my office traditionally comes before the board to seek an appropriations transfer, as we are this year. I'm pleased to point out that it's a very modest appropriation transfer that I think is fairly well-described in my memorandum and in your introduction, Chair Green. I respectfully request your approval.
Any questions? Move approval. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question of approving and executing the following documents related to the construction of the new Brookline High School expansion?
That's a press plant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading from the wrong... Wrong agenda. Okay. Make sure I don't make that mistake again. Okay. Question of executing an air rights easement agreement granting Children's Hospital the right to construct a structural canopy over a portion of the Pearl Street sidewalk at the entrance to Children's to Brookline Place facility. So, this is a question of executing a lease agreement to allow Children's Hospital to install and maintain landscaping and other features on town property located adjacent to One Brookline Place at the corner of Washington and Brookline Avenue. Mr. Burkite.
Good evening, members of the select board. Mr. Chair, John Burkite with the Office of Town Council, Associate Town Council. So, I'm here seeking your approval of two instruments that are granting property rights in town property that's adjacent to the Children's Development of Brookline Place. One is an easement. That easement was approved at the 2018 annual town meeting as Article 13, so you've been authorized to do that. And the second is a license agreement. That doesn't require a town meeting approval. The... As Selectman Green stated, the easement is an air rights easement for a structural canopy that's providing an attractive entrance to the Children's facility that the entrance is on Pearl Street. And the license is for a piece of property. It's... If you want to see a schematic of it, it's at page 60 of your packet. It's a piece of property, town property, that's essentially between the Brookline Place Children's Development property and the town sidewalk. And as part of a memorandum of understanding that I believe was signed in 2015 and then a special permit that was granted in 2015, Children's agreed that it was a condition of special permit that they would take care of this piece of property. I'm talking about the license agreement now. In exchange for... In order to do that, they wanted a license to allow them to come onto the property to landscape and to maintain it, so... So, basically, two documents that I'm looking for your approval. I'm happy to answer any and all questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions? So, I think we should separate the two, right?
Yeah, I would agree. And I would add also that representing Children's, Tim Sullivan is here from Gilson Stores who's representing Children's.
Any questions for our council or Children's?
Just refresh my memory whether or not this easement would be transferred if the owner of the property were to ever change.
It will be, yes. But there is a condition that town meeting that was implemented by this board, recommended a town meeting, the town meeting accepted, was that in the event that the building is taken down or the canopy is taken down, then the easement is extinguished.
Expired.
Yeah. But if Children's does have the right to... There's an entity that's holding the property. They have the right to assign it to someone else and the easement will continue if it's assigned to another owner.
And the canopy has gone through the planning board and the landscaping plan is subject to approval by the associate director of regulatory planning or some similar position?
Correct. The planning board has already looked at it. So has Tom Brady. They've had a lot of input in the license agreement and so... And the plans are all attached to the license agreement, so you can look at it and see what's going to happen. There is some discretion, I think, of the town arborist. If he... If Children's wants to make some modifications to it, he can look at it and they can make field modifications, so... But it has... Yes, it's been bettered.
Okay. Any other questions? So, move approval of air rights easement agreement granting Children's Hospital the right to construct a structural canopy over a portion of the Pearl Street sidewalk at the entrance to Children's to Brookline Place facility. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. Second, question of executing a license agreement to allow Children's Hospital to install and maintain landscaping and other features on town property locating adjacent to One Brookline Place at the corner of Washington Street and Brookline Avenue. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll just... I'm going to leave free original copies of these, both instruments, with you and the primary document. You're thanking... That was also a check. Yes.
Oh, don't leave... Don't forget that.
Yeah. Children's is paying us $16,000 for the air rights easement.
Each? Just a joke. Just a joke. Okay. Question of granting a temporary all kinds beverage sales license to the Hellenic Association of Boston to be held on Saturday, June 29th, 2019 for a concert from 5:30 PM to 11:00 PM at 162 Goddard Avenue. Any questions about that? Please approve.
Yeah. The police department has reviewed the paperwork and sees no reason to deny the request.
Okay. All in favor? Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And chair of votes, aye. So, next. Question of approving, of authorizing the filling of the following vacancy within the Recreation Department, Assistant Director, Lee Jackson.
Hello. Good evening. Lee Jackson, the Director of Recreation. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Tonight I'm here to request your authorization to hire for Assistant Director for Recreation. This person is under the Director and they have direct oversight of all of... This person is under the Director, and they have direct oversight of all of our programming areas within Recreation. They also supervise all of the area managers and have a wide variety of recreational programs that they serve. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, comments?
It's exciting, right?
Right, this is your first, first authorization for a position as, as the head of the department, correct?
It is, correct.
So, let me give you the lecture, not lecture, the comment that in looking for people to fill this vacancy, make sure that the universe of people that you look at is very diverse, so that you have an opportunity to make a selection that's based on potential diverse candidates for the position, so.
Will do, you got it.
And let's go beyond polls, let's actually do some hiring.
Yes, let's do that. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, move approval of, get to the right page here. Move approval of filling the vacancy within the Recreation Department for Assistant Director, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Electronic Communications Review Committee.
Eight A.
Eight A? Okay. I know, I'm using the old agenda, I apologize.
We added the library Assistant Director in view of the summer schedule, knowing that this was a critical position, so I'm covering for Sarah Sloman for the library. Cal and Bignali took a job with the, as a library director at Olin College, so Sarah is looking to get this position filled as soon as possible. It's a critical position, implementing all the technology in the library.
Good, any questions?
There's some reference in the cover letter that this position may need some review in terms of expectations. Is that, what's the status of that happening, going to the HR board?
So, I would say that, you know, the, there are two Assistant Director jobs, both positions are graded very similarly. This position is not that old in terms of grading. We can definitely have a conversation with HR about whether or not it's appropriately graded, and if, you know, we need to reexamine that, we will.
Yeah, I mean, just for what it's worth, my, my feedback is, let's do a search and see what comes back, and if we don't get the candidates we're looking for in terms of diversity, or simply in terms of numbers, I think it might be appropriate to go back to the HR board and just look at cops.
Okay, any other questions? Move approval of, let's see, the position of Assistant Director, Library Director for Technology, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Now, Electronic Communications Review Committee, Mr. Franco.
So, this is a committee that town meeting recommended or urged us to appoint back in May of 2018. Clearly, we are maybe a little bit behind schedule, but we are on the case, and what is before you is a proposed charge for that committee. In, at a 10,000-foot view, the town meeting wanted us to take a look at whether there was some way to increase the amount of electronic communication that the town engaged in, and then, secondly, take a look at whether there was some improvements that could be made to our electronic communication systems in emergency situations. And again, this, this proposed charge seeks to fulfill both of those tasks, and it seeks to accommodate the timeline that town meeting laid out, which is having a report in the form of warrant articles and narrative to an annual town meeting with the results of that investigation. So, here we are. My expectation is that we will approve this charge in the relatively near future, and I hope to take the summer to solicit applications, so anybody that's in the audience or maybe at home that's interested in this topic, I would urge you to apply for appointments. Hopefully, those appointments will take place in the early fall, and we will be off to the races and start our work.
Any questions?
Ben's going to be on that committee, right?
I am the, the-
The Chair?
The Chair of the committee, so.
So, it's going to be a great committee, with a very successful upper chair.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? So, I vote, I move approval of the charge for the Electronic Systems, not Electric Communications Committee. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Did I, did I say that right?
I think it's, the Electronic Communications Review Committee.
Okay.
The ECRC.
That's what I meant. That's what I know.
Title of the-
Okay. Okay. So, next, Select Board Committee on Pedestrian Friendly Lighting. This is a committee being set up pursuant to or in Article 22 of the May Town Meeting. It was introduced by Mr. Frank Carroll, who's in the audience, and if you'd like to say anything to sort of motivate this committee, you're welcome to do that. Otherwise, I'll just say that it's a committee to study the extension of pedestrian-friendly lighting along sidewalks with extensive pedestrian activity, so that we can encourage people to walk even at nighttime, and not have to rely on street lighting for automobiles, which is not always geared towards the sidewalk and other areas where pedestrians will walk. Do you want to say anything, Mr. Carroll? Okay.
We're very convincing at town meetings.
Right. And we appreciate your, your bringing this matter to our attention, or town meeting's attention, and pushing through the vote. So, any questions from the board?
I would like just to make one comment, and that is that I think it's important that the lighting for pedestrians be lower to the ground, so that the tree canopy doesn't get in the way, and I just hope that the committee will take that into consideration. I don't think we want to be tearing down trees in order to provide lighting for people who are walking, so, so to think would be in conflict, and I don't see, I understand why that wouldn't be in the charge, but I just wanted to make that comment.
That's very much consistent with my perspective. The whole idea is that it has to be in libraries on lower poles, or the need for-
And point to that.
Mr. Overapproval, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Ms. Heller.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Now, the fun part of the meeting. The Electric Scooter Pilot Program, and this is going to be a presentation and possible approval of an interim operating agreement with Skinny Labs, Inc., doing business as SPIN to participate in the Brookline E-Scooter Pilot Program. I think SPIN knows that we've decided not to vote on including them in the pilot this meeting, rather, at the next meeting on July 9, when Mr. Kerrane and Ms. Hamilton will be presenting a broad picture of the E-Scooter program and how it's going to operate in Brookline. So, that'll be a more appropriate place to vote to include SPIN in the pilot, as well as address other issues that may come before the board, so. Mr. Kerrane.
Todd Kerrane, Transportation Administrator for the Town of Brookline. I'm joined here with Ashley Brown, who's the Government Partnerships Manager for SPIN. SPIN is a subsidiary of the Ford Motor Company. They applied to be the third and final company to take part in the Brookline Pilot E-Scooter Pilot Program. They had actually applied at the end of March, before, right before we launched. We took this time to, one, launch the, with the two companies who had been working with us since August of last year, but also to learn more about SPIN, learn more about their operations, the people, how they operate, and to check their references and vet them, not only with the municipalities that they provided on their, their, their application that you've all been provided, but also to call up some other communities that were not listed on their application, but where we know they operate. They're one of the three largest operators of E-scooters worldwide. And as I wrote in my memo, all of their references come back very favorable. They have a reputation of working with local governments to tackle any problems that arise in a proactive manner, so we're bringing the application before you tonight, and I will turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you so much, Todd. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Just one second here. May I approach to hand out to give you-
This is not a court. May I approach, Your Honor? You must be aware.
And Select Member Heller, can you see the screen okay?
I don't think she's probably able to.
Okay, okay, no problem. Well, we'll be sure to leave behind a packet for you, for your review upon your return. So, good evening to Chairman Green, to members of the Select Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you tonight as you consider the approval of an interim operating agreement with SPIN to participate in the Brookline E-Scooter Pilot Program. My name is Ashley Brown, and as Todd said, I am the Government Partnerships Manager at SPIN. Tonight, I am joined by my colleague, Dan Skane, and a representative from the Novus So, let me tell you a little bit about SPIN. As Todd shared, we currently operate E-scooters in cities and campuses nationwide. We are consistently recognized for our ability to work collaboratively with cities. We have been bringing dockless mobility options to the streets in a responsible and carefully orchestrated manner. Last year, we were backed by Ford Motor Company, and right now, we are based in San Francisco, where we have a diverse team of engineers, designers, planners, you name it. The team plans to bring E-scooters to 100 markets by the end of 2019. And at the core of SPIN is our partnership promise. We never launch without permission. That is something that we really hold, hold at the core of our values. We believe in maintaining scooters with our own employees, so we can bring local jobs to communities where we are servicing. We also like to work collaboratively with cities and towns to share our data and share what we're learning about how our scooters are being used, and where they're being used, and at what times, which I think can really help cities and towns think about the future in terms of planning streets and, and from a design perspective. Number four, we believe in scaling responsibly. So, if we were to enter into a pilot with Brookline tomorrow, and we were allotted 100 scooters, we wouldn't start with 100 on day one. We would start small to figure out where our scooters are best used, and then we would scale up from there. And then finally, we believe in protecting the user and the user's data. And so, a part of that comes with, we have a robust team of engineers and developers who are always looking at ways that we can protect the information of, of our riders. So, what can SPIN bring to Brookline? I had the privilege of attending the feedback forum a few weeks ago, and I, I listened. I listened to all the issues that were shared, sidewalk riding, inappropriate parking, no helmet usage. All of these things are not new to SPIN. We have been working with cities and towns for, for the last couple of years, and we have found innovative ways to address these issues. The things I'd like to talk with you about tonight are these six points, that we have found really strong ways to manage user accountability. We have developed parking and docking solutions. We have launched several safety initiatives. We have a huge commitment on equity in how we are serving diverse communities and making sure that our vehicles are available to not just sort of the town center or the city center, but that they're also available to places where there might not be a lot of transportation options. We've gotten creative with our geo-fencing. And then finally, Dan will talk more about our local operations. So, for user accountability, we kind of think of this in three, in three ways. We, we have an unacceptable parking policy, where in our app, users, when they approach a vehicle to launch a new ride, they have the ability to score the previous rider, how it was parked, where it was staged, and they can leave feedback about, about the previous rider. That feedback is then put into our app, so that if a user has consistently low scores of, basically, you either give the previous rider a thumbs up or a thumbs down. If they have so many, up to three, we have the ability to ban that user from the app and from using our service, because we take our commitment to town seriously, and we want to be good partners in, in the programs that we have. We also have unsafe riding accountability measures. In the same way, we are able to, with our app, it allows a rider or not to make an incident report using the GPS location tag, that if you open up our app and you see a scooter that's not riding appropriately, you can mark and tag that scooter in our app, and that will send a signal to our team to then sort of be on the alert to look out for this rider for the future. And so, again, after so many times, it triggers email notification, a push notification to say, hey, we got an alert that you didn't park properly, or you were not riding where you're supposed to be riding, and after three offenses, that can lead to a ban in our service.
Is that in real time?
I, I'm not sure if it's in real time, but I can work to get that, I can work to get that information to you. I could just have to ask our engineers about that. And so, this leads us to our three-strikes policy, that as a pilot participant, SPIN can execute riding and parking incentives. We want to reward good behavior, so if you park well, we want to give you a discount. We want to, we want to see you use our service more, but we only want to encourage acceptable parking and safe riding. Innovative parking and docking solutions. SPIN, as, as Todd had mentioned, we are operating in several cities and university colleges and campuses across the nation. We are not new to the idea that parking can be a challenge, and oftentimes, especially in communities where people are visiting, that they just don't know where is the appropriate place to park. So, we've developed drop zones in some communities. Some of the pictures that you see here, all the way to the left, you will see a solution that we came up with in Tampa, Florida, where we can identify some real estate, working with a city or town, and block off some space, so that people know this is a, a good place to drop your scooter or to pick up a scooter. And then, as you can see here in Long Beach, we have a drop zone there, you can see the sand. And then, we have a partnership in the, in the photo, all the way to the right. We are currently piloting a docking station option for cities and towns that are interested in looking at what we know, similar to like a Blue Bike docking station, but for scooters, so they will charge themselves, and that will be a place where people can pick up and drop scooters. and drop scooters. Right now, it's being piloted in Washington DC and Ann Arbor, Michigan. So these are just a few of the ways we've gotten creative to help solve the parking and docking challenges that cities and towns have experienced. We also have in-app capabilities where we can pin locations. So for example, if Brookline wanted to proceed with a drop zone, we can pin those locations in our app, so people will know this is a great, a great place to leave the scooter. This is a great, a safe place to leave the scooter. This is a great place to pick up the scooters. So we can get creative. Our team can build out these functions in working with the town of Brookline. Spinning safely is so important to our company, and we have several initiatives that we really value. First of all, before we talk about safety for the rider, we also like to look internally, and we hold ourselves accountable to safety first. One of the things that a lot of people don't know, we have an anonymous tip line. So internally, if there are improper practices or anything that internally we could be better as a company, employees of Spin can report that. And we can hold ourselves accountable to developing a better product, thinking more innovatively about different solutions and options. We also promote helmet usage. At many of our launches, we give out, like our competitors, we give out a lot of helmets for free, but we've also established a partnership with Overade helmets, and now have the ability for riders who are interested to order a foldable helmet, to make it easier for people to, to wear helmets or to encourage people to wear helmets. And so if you've never seen a foldable helmet, I've brought a few here for you to play with as I continue with my presentation. And I will just demonstrate one, but I encourage you to kind of play around with it. You can pass that one around, and then I'll show you how this works. So the helmet actually folds in three parts. It opens up here like this. The sides, the sides pop out. And then you pull this down, and it snaps. And now you have a helmet to wear for your bike, for your scooter, for your skates. And with Spin, our partnership with Overade allows for a 30% discount. And so it makes it a little bit more affordable for folks. Right now, these helmets are pricing around 80 bucks. And so this is one of the ways that we are thinking about safety, to make it easier for people, to encourage and promote helmet usage. Next, we develop pilot partnerships with community organizations. The most important action we can take to keep people safe is to build smart infrastructure. And at Spin, we know we can't do that alone, and so we like to work locally with local organizations to build up an advocacy arm that promotes safer streets for not just the scooter community, but also the cycling community, and I think the community at large as well. I'm going to come back to the in-app education, because my following slides will show some examples of that, but let me just quickly talk about insurance. With the input and expertise of Ford's corporate insurance, Spin has what we believe to be a robust insurance coverage for our scooter operations. This includes a $10 million per occurrence in aggregate general liability policy, automobile insurance, and workers' comp coverage. Spin's coverage is among the highest in the industry. So 10 million per occurrence. And then finally, in-app education. Before you can even start your first ride with us, when you open up the app, or if you're opening up the app for the first time in a new city, you have to go through a series of education slides that show you how to ride safely and what the rules are within that particular jurisdiction.
Can I interrupt you a second?
Sure.
The insurance, so it's $10 million per occurrence. Who's the insured? Is that Spin or?
No, the insured is, the insured, I believe, is the rider. The rider.
Okay.
In the in-app education, new users, again, to our service, will see a series of these screens before you can even launch a ride with us. And so things like wear a helmet, protect yourself while riding, that's required by law, riding in the city, use bike lanes when available, do not ride on the sidewalks, parking the scooter, park at a designated motorcycle parking spot or the furniture zone, or, and we can customize these messages depending on what the town or the city would like us to say, or whatever's required by, by the municipality. Spin is committed to bringing stationless mobility to, options to a diverse community of users. We are very proud of our Spin Access Program that offers a variety of options for those who might not have access to transportation, or just there might be some other barriers to enjoying our service. So we do have the ability to offer the service to those who are unbanked or are looking for cash fare options. We have the ability to set up users who don't have smartphones, which I think really helps to bridge the gap between some generations of folks that might be interested in using scooters. And then finally, we have a reduced fare structure for low-income users. And so if, if folks want to use our service, and they already are receiving some other form of government assistance, they are automatically approved to use our Spin Access Program at a reduced fare. And then finally, with scooter distribution, it's so important that in the areas that are not being served by our current transportation systems, that those folks also have the ability to use our service. And so we like to work closely with cities and towns to identify where those transportation gaps or deserts are, and think creatively about how we can distribute our scooters in a way that can meet all the residents of that community. And it's just among one of many of the ways that we are focusing and emphasizing our commitment to equity.
Before you move on, can you just talk a little bit more about Spin Access? How does this work, someone without, someone who's unbanked, maybe using cash, someone without a smartphone? How does that actually work?
Yeah, so we have developed, almost like, think of like a preloaded debit card. So we have the ability to, if somebody wants to pay cash, for example, they can work with our local ops team to load sort of like a, like, it looks like, probably like a gift card, and then that will sort of be like the balance that continues to sort of fall off as you use the services. And then for our non-smartphone users, we have a text-to-unlock scooter feature. So again, if you don't use a smartphone, you can have a gift card with a balance, and you can use a text-to-unlock feature that would allow you to still have access to our services.
And then what is your, I know you operate in different places, and the fare is probably different, but what's the usual fare, and what is the fare for low-income users?
So yes, the typical fare, which is pretty, like an industry standard, it's usually a dollar to start the ride, and then it ranges somewhere between 15 cents to 25 cents a minute. For our reduced fare structure, it would be half that. So it'd be 50 cents to start, and, and then just a few cents per minute.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Geofencing. Spin can implement a geofence around a large designated area in the app. One of the things I wrote down as feedback from the form I attended a few weeks ago was that there was a lot of concerns about some of the riding in the park, and just sort of how parking was managed in areas where people are enjoying sort of outdoor scenery. And so we can get creative with school zones and senior complexes to look at approaching a program that would either slow speeds or create, maybe based on time, whether or not there is riding through certain large territories. As you know, sometimes it's hard to really pinpoint GPS down to a specific block, but if there is a large radius that we can secure, our team can definitely create a program that would discourage users from driving or parking or both in a designated zone at certain times. If a user violates the geofence, they receive a warning by email and/or a push notification on their mobile device, so that they at least are made aware and educated. Okay, next, I'm going to allow Dan to come up and talk about our local operations.
Thanks, Ashley. All right. Hi, everyone. Ashley introduced me, Daniel Skane. I'm a market launcher with Spin, and so what that means is I travel around all different markets, help them get set up, set up the local operations, and basically get everything set up, and then I'll kind of move on to the next market. I'm local, though, I live in Massachusetts, so yeah. Yeah, quickly, starting with our launch practices and kind of how it works, I'll give a quick overview. So there's several steps in the process that we'll do in order to get everything set up. One piece is finding, sourcing a warehouse that's close to the operating area. We have forward review all of our leases and different pieces of the warehouse to make sure they meet all of their criteria. So every warehouse we get is heavily vetted to make sure it's safe for our employees, and, and just will work for our operations. Another piece is hiring. We prioritizing, we prioritize hiring full-time W-2 employees, 40 hours a week, medical benefits and everything. We try to get people who are really, really invested in the company and excited to be working for us. So we've had really good success with that so far, and a lot of companies don't do that, but it's something that we really take pride in. Another piece that we'll work on for launch is getting the app set up. So like Ashley mentioned, all the different screens before for, to educate the user, all the different geofencing, we'll basically make sure we're meeting all the city requirements and taking care of all of that, so that day one, that's all set and ready to go and functional. Yeah, and then last piece is just receiving the scooters, safety checking them, testing them out, making sure that they're good to ride. That's kind of the last key piece for the launch, just making sure that we're not putting any unsafe scooters out there, and making sure that everyone that's going out there is functional and will be available for a user to ride. And then the last kind of piece, as a launcher, what I do is just make sure, kind of right after the launch, diagnose any problems that may arise, and just make sure that our launch is successful and providing sustainable, healthy operations going forward. Quickly speaking about our operations practices, so generally, how it works is we'll have our warehouse near the operating area, kind of, we have a few different shifts. A morning shift will come in, pick up the scooters that have been charged and safety-checked the night before. They'll do their own independent safety checks, and then they will load the scooters in a van, bring them out to, to the operating area, and deploy them in our preset kind of deployment zones. And they've all been trained on how to deploy properly, making sure they're not in the way of access ramps, sidewalks, driveways, things like that. They're making sure that they're in, in the proper locations. And then, you know, throughout the day, the scooters, that, yeah, hopefully, hopefully they're getting rides, and then we'll have our afternoon shift that kind of works on making sure basically that the operations are going smoothly. They make sure that scooters aren't where they're supposed to be. Basically, it's, it's a couple of people in our van driving around, collecting any ones that might have low battery or showing up as unrentable on the app, and they're really just there to make sure that everything's going smoothly, and also to respond to move requests or any support tickets, so that if something comes through our support team, that they can respond quickly to it. And yeah, kind of tying into that, a day in the life of a Spin scooter. So in the morning, like I said, these scooters, they come from our warehouse, fully charged, they're going out in the streets, they're getting rides for users. And then at nighttime, our nighttime operations team will basically take the van, drive around, load up all the scooters, get all of them off the streets, and then bring them back to our warehouse to charge them, safety-check them, and make sure that they're good for the morning, for the next deployment. And then, yeah, lastly, in regards to customer service, we have an around-the-clock support team. They're constantly monitoring requests to move scooters, tickets about broken scooters, ones that aren't working properly, and we get those messages very quickly. Our support team is working around the clock, so kind of how the timeline would work is if, once a support team member sees something, for example, they say, hey, we have a move request in Brookline, this scooter's in somebody's law, on their property or in their driveway, we'll get that, immediately send it to our operations team, and our goal is to, as soon as possible, get that out of the way and make sure that it's moved to a proper area. So the target is, it, we can do it very quickly, but always within a couple hours is our usual timeframe. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. So finally, I just, I end with this, too, with a picture of the green line, to say that, you know, both cities and operators, we have, we have the same mission. We want to provide sustainable, safe, and enjoyable forms of transportation. As, as we can see here in Brookline, the e-scooter industry is moving incredibly quickly, and thousands of people are taking to the streets every day to connect to other modes of transportation. So we have seen it as really a strong, a last-mile solution for cities and towns. But companies in this space can't just take high demand as a signal that our work is finished. And I think Spin has thought beyond sort of dollars and cents, that, you know, if we want, really want to see this long-term, if we want to see success, if we really want to build and move towards a partnership approach with cities and towns, we have to think beyond every scooter ride, how many can we have on the street? As providers of a reliable transportation service, we merely can't be reactive to safety issues and community complaints. We like to think before they occur. We'd like to anticipate them. And so that's why we have developed all of these initiatives and different solutions along the way. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I welcome your questions.
I have to start off by asking either you or maybe Mr. Green, do you have any response to the assertion regarding Chapter 90? Just for the record.
So that was all discussed at the three public hearings, and then the meeting with the board actually voted for the pilot. It is true, a technicality in the law, which was written in 2011, in response to, at that time, mopeds were starting to be released that were under the state law CC level, I think it was 50 CCs or less, so they did not qualify as motorcycles, did not have to get a license plate, they started appear on the roadways. So in response to that, in order to deal and manage with those, they created the requirements for those types of vehicles, turn signals, 18-plus helmet, as well as certain hours of operation during daytime hours only. That was written long before anyone envisioned a razor scooter, which could be electrified and motorized, such as these. There is actually three pending, actually more than three, but there are three main bills pending before the Joint Committee on Transportation. Our own Select Board member, Hamilton, testified on behalf of one of those. The first one is co-sponsored between the Cities of Cambridge, Brookline, Town of Brookline, City of Boston, and drafted by the MAPC, which looks to change the definitions to bring these scooters and to bring the laws in line with what we're seeing out there. The other is actually filed by the governor, and the third is filed by Senator Boncorie, who is chair, or co-chair, on the Senate side of the Joint Committee on Transportation. So there are actually pieces of legislation that are moving their way through the legislative process to address these issues.
I have a question for Ashley. You've talked to a couple of the main complaints that we hear about scooters in Brookline right now. But what I didn't hear you talk about was how you verify age. How do you make sure that your users are 18-plus? So I'm sure that there's some system that you've thought through. Can you just share some of that thinking with us?
Sure, sure. Absolutely. I'm so glad that you asked that, and I do apologize that my presentation omitted that. But our app, as it stands, if you download a Spin app today, you register your email address, create a password, there is a barcode that there is a barcode that you have to use with your driver's license or your state ID. Again, if you're using the smartphone sort of version of this, right, as I talked about, there's a non-smartphone option as well. But we have a third-party verification system that will verify the validity of that government-issued ID.
Is that for every ride or just when you initiate?
That's for the initial setup of the account.
So is there any system in place that if I give my child my ID and have them set up an account and then they ride to school every day? Or they decide that they want to go to a local business district using my account? Is there some sort of verification mechanism in place?
Right now, we don't have the ability to kind of look at all of the different ways that people could sort of manipulate the system. We are thinking through other ways that we can verify people that it might not just be in an ID format. But right now, that technology is just not available to us right now that would allow users to ride pretty quickly. So right now, that that is not available, unfortunately.
Well, can I ask, related to that, you mentioned before, and I'm curious to know more about this process of, I think you said like some like marking, tagging a scooter. If someone was on a sidewalk, I imagine you could also do that if you saw an obviously underage, maybe child riding a scooter. I'm just curious to know how you, how that would work in practice. You know, I know there's probably lots of folks that have seen somebody ride on the sidewalk but didn't want to confront that person. But to be able to actually, through the app, to be able to, I don't see any markings on this that would indicate, I'd be able to say it was scooter number 328 or something like that. How does this work?
So it's GPS-driven. So if they're, based on your current location, it'll notify you of, or it'll show you the scooters that you're wanting to report that are sort of in your vicinity. Hopefully, there's not a million in your vicinity. But, but yes, you have the ability, based on your current location, to report that in-app.
So if they were to pass by me, by the time I get my phone out and they're about a block away, how would I, how would I be able to identify that scooter?
Yeah, I think for all of the, all of those particular situations, I think it's difficult. But what we have right now is the ability to sort of mark or report a scooter. I do think that, and I floated this idea with my team here recently, about having a much more visible placard or sticker that would sort of identify the scooter by number so that people do have the ability to confirm if that's the one that they're seeing or the one that they're trying to report.
That might be helpful. The other question I had was about, about the docking option, which seemed very attractive for me. And you mentioned, is that in DC that you're piloting that or?
Yes, right now, it's this partnership with Swift Mile. And right now, it's being beta-tested in DC and Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Can you walk us through how that, how that works?
Right, so it's a solution that we hope to offer. Right now, we're exploring sort of ads and advertising to pay for it. But we would sort of enter into a partnership, maybe with a small business that has sort of the real estate. And we, it hopefully would drive business to them because the scooters are placed there. And then what, what we hope it would sort of encourage is safer parking, you know, easier charging and deploying and kind of having a station that people always recognize that, yes, I know I can get a Spin scooter from this intersection. And so right now, we are exploring and engaging with community businesses to station them for the businesses that have the real estate and that it would be cost-free to the cities and towns and to the businesses through advertising.
And are those docking stations throughout the town or just in the downtown area?
That's a great question. I don't know exactly where they are positioned in both cities, but I can definitely get that information for you.
So is there a way to, where you use drop zones or those brackets in the street? Is there a way to, and I assume those are geofenced or digitally identified or something, whatever the fancy term is? Is there a way to penalize riders who don't use those locations for parking?
There is. What we'd like to share with cities and towns about the virtual, we call them virtual corrals. Because GPS is not yet precise to a block, sometimes for the user experience, they could be in the spot, but their phone is not registering that they're in the appropriate spot. And so sometimes we find it's difficult for users to end rides because the GPS sometimes is not as precise to that, to that patch of, you know, sidewalk. And so we find that sometimes virtual corrals can actually frustrate riders. And we don't want to sort of create a reverse, adverse reaction to that. But it is designed at least to promote better parking and to encourage people to, you know, if you're, you know, 20 feet away from a zone, to drop in the zone.
Washington DC's scooter pilot program has morphed over time. Have you guys been involved since day one? Or did you come in kind of later? And what, what has been the experience as DC has navigated their program?
Yes, I'm not as familiar with the timeframe of when we entered the market in DC. But I do know that DC is one of our strongest markets and where we are seeing the thriving nature of a lot of these partnerships and where we often will run a lot of our initiatives before we launch them nationwide. One of the, I think, one of the biggest and strongest pieces about our, about our relationship with DC has been our workforce. We have a nice workforce relationship with local community organizations, especially for folks who might have been previously incarcerated. And we've really developed a relationship with different community organizations to hire, to promote, not just our product, but this alternate, alternate transportation option. And so, so far, DC has been one of our strongest markets here on the East Coast by far.
One of the things that the four communities, Brookline, Somerville, Cambridge, and Boston, when we were meeting as a group to try to figure out, you know, what the regulations should be regarding these to then recommend something to the Joint Committee on Transportation, Cambridge felt very strongly that there should be blinkers on these types of devices. I've even had someone recommend rearview mirrors. How difficult would that be to put on your devices?
Right now, we have a team full of engineers that are trying a variety of things as we've gotten feedback. Right now, as you can see, and I hate to say maybe Dan, maybe you can, as I'm explaining, we don't have blinkers right now. But if you were to engage our stop signal, you know, we have lights that will change, that will flash. And so right now, our models currently, and I would say industry-wide, do not have blinkers at the moment. But I do know that engineers are looking at how to, you know, in the next phase of these, you know, what other things could we think about or include? I mean, this is one of our newer models and it has a speedometer on it, so you know how fast you're going. A previous model before that did not have that. And so I think, I think as we gain more knowledge in cities and towns and we see what's working, what, you know, what doesn't work, should the tires be bigger, should they be smaller? Should, you know, I think we're going to continue to try a lot of different things to get to the right products.
One of the things that came up at the scooter public information meeting a couple weeks ago was that these have a short kind of shelf life because they're used so much that they are discarded pretty much within six months to 18 months. What has your experience been and where do these end up?
In terms of our process on?
Disposal.
On disposal.
Quickly, I can say I don't have too much experience in knowing what we do with the scooters themselves. But sustainability with our decommissioned vehicles is certainly a priority. And I know we did one program with, we used to do bikes as well. And the bikes that we kind of transitioned away from decommissioned because we were transitioning to scooters, we sent those to a program in Nicaragua to basically supply some sort of community organization with several totally operational bikes. So sustainability and recycling of our products is definitely something that we take seriously, but I can't speak exactly to the scooters themselves.
Could you find out and send us some information?
Sure, absolutely.
I do want to thank you for actually addressing, I had at least six questions here, and your presentation addressed three and a half out of my bullets. So the biggest challenges that I think we're facing in Brookline definitely have been parking enforcement, sidewalk enforcement, making sure that the companies are kind of following up with the users who are not parking well. And then one of the things that we're going to have to grapple with is the geofencing question. We have a lot of really sacred parks in town. And so we need to figure out whether or not we want to just geofence those areas off. So I was delighted to see in your presentation that you have that technology and that you're open to that discussion.
Absolutely. And I will just add to that point that we don't think that day one, we get it right. So the nice thing about working with Spin, especially having a local operations here, you're going to know the guy or the gal that's running the warehouse. You're going to know them by name, by face. And we will always work to customize the program to get it right. And so that's one of the things that we stand by as we work to develop a partnership.
Was that also, in addition to the geofencing, the speed zone feature is something we should think about, too? You know, we're certain areas where we don't want folks flying by at 15 miles an hour.
And another thing to add about our local operations is that because we are here and we build and employ our own, our own staff, that we are always constantly reviewing and looking at the condition and pulling scooters. So we'll never have all the scooters that were allotted on the ground if we don't have them in safe and operating condition. And so that's, that's another one of our commitments.
Any other questions? I'd like to sort of conclude by saying, and I'd like to commend you for attending the listening session and listening, right? It doesn't always happen. And that's very important because this is going to be a work in progress. And as we go along, you know, hopefully, all the companies will be listening to the complaints that come up as well as the issues that they may not have thought of initially that will present themselves and address those so that we can get to the point where we minimize the number of problems that are associated with the program. So commend you for that. We don't always see people attending meetings and listening, right? But I appreciate the fact that you did.
Thank you.
So we're not going to vote tonight on admitting Spin to the pilot program. We'll do that on July 9th. And unless anyone has any other questions. Are there any questions from the audience? This is not a hearing, but yes, Mr. Carroll. Could you go to the mic? Our audience wants to know who you are and what you look like.
Yeah, I'm Frank Carroll. My question is whether you're going to make some scooters available that have seats. I mean, it turns out that for older people, scooters are a much more attractive option if they have seats.
That is a really, really great question. Actually, on Saturday in Cambridge, there was a new mobility event that showed all the variations of different technology that is forthcoming. Right now, Spin doesn't have that in the pipeline. But I, you know, every day is a new day and our engineers and our team are always thinking of new ways to serve communities. And so I'll definitely share it with them. But right now, I am not under, I don't have any immediate impression that that is where we're headed for at least this year.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for bringing your show-and-tow helmet. That was interesting.
Heather was going to keep it.
Yeah, right. I thought you can bring one for each one of us. Oh, it's more than $50. We can't accept it, so. So next, question of renewing open-air parking licenses for 2019 through 2020.
I'm going to walk you through this, Mr. Chair. So the open-air parking licenses, which are essentially commercial type of parking lots, they're authorized by zoning, but the licensing is in the select board's jurisdiction. So each year, the board approves licenses or renews licenses. They're done on an off cycle. So all the other licenses that you're renewing each year is done in, for January 1st. The open-air parking is done on July 1st, the fiscal year basis. So you have in your packet in a cover letter that tells you the kind of, any issues that are, that exist. And the first thing I want to tell you is that the, all the police and building departments, which initially said pending, are now in those reports. And also on the cover sheet, you'll see there was, at least initially, there's one, two, three, four, five applicants who, for whatever reason, they didn't apply. We couldn't get a hold of them. That has since been now down to three. So there's three applicants or three holders of current licenses that we have not been in touch with. 12 Harris Street, 41 Gorham, and 94 Beaconsfield. And so what we typically do in those cases is we ask you to vote them conditional and then renew them conditionally. And that if, if we don't receive anything, well, if we receive a post-July 1st application through July 31st, we will assess a $50 late fee. If we do not get anything by July 31st, then we will consider them closed and we'll require them to reapply. So your, your packet includes a list. So we are recommending that 12 Harris, 41 Gorham, and 94 Beaconsfield be approved conditionally with that language I mentioned.
On our sheet, it says 12 Harris no longer owns the lot.
We have to verify that.
So I guess we can vote subject to verification?
Sure, that'd be fine.
And then it looks like we found some lots that were out of compliance as well.
You know, I want to work with those a little bit. The enforcement of open-air parking lots are very difficult. They're large paved areas. Sometimes they're contiguous to another parking lot that's not a, not an open-air parking lot. And sometimes, and it depends on when you go and take the picture, there could be some extra cars there. So I found, though, that we really need to double-check on some of these. But I assure you that we are going to follow up with all of these. We have our new licensing clerk, as you know, Tiffany Souza, who's doing a great job. And she's committed to getting this done. So I would just say that we are aware of the issues that have been raised in this memo. We want to verify them and then deal with them.
Yeah, I think it's an opportunity for education as much as anything.
I agree.
Can you tell what are the costs for these licenses to the owners?
I don't know offhand. I'll find out.
Typical license agreements range around $1,000.
You're talking about, you were talking about people who are parking in these lots with the?
No, no, no. I'm talking about?
The municipal fee?
Just license, I think license agreements.
Well, this is a license that the select board issues. So the question is, what's the fee?
Yeah, I'm just curious about?
It's not $1,000.
It's pretty, pretty low.
It's nominal.
Yeah.
It's really covering the cost of administration, but I'll find out more about that.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? So more approval of renewal of open air parking licenses, subject to what we just discussed in terms of follow-through. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
I think she's left after eight. She said she...
Oh, that's right, okay. Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
If you give me one second, I think I can answer Raul's question. There's two different sort of thresholds here. For a lot that's got one to nine cars, the cost is $75. For a lot that's nine plus, it's $15 a car.
Okay.
And this is an annual license, so it's...
Wow.
In, in the scheme of things where parking spaces are rented for several hundred dollars a month, it's, it's not a huge imposition, so.
You know, the issue is that we're, we can only charge fees for, you know, which we can document our costs. And so, even though there's a very lucrative potential arrangement that people have, it's our costs which are being considered when we establish the municipal licensing fee.
Good to know.
We, we issue licenses for a lot of different things that, it's, it's an interesting list to read.
And we just voted that. So next, annual appointment.
Yes, okay, this is mine as well. So each year, consistent with the beginning of the fiscal year, which starts next week. Happy fiscal, new fiscal year, Eve. We are, we, the practice is that the, the board appoints management staff, department heads and management within certain schedules. Some of those employees are on multi-year appointment, myself and police and fire chief, or the town council happens to have a three-year term of appointment in the bylaws. So we're asking you to reappoint those department heads and managers who are on that schedule, whose appointment are due this year. We also, this is the time when we recommend and the board authorizes a general salary increase for management and non-union wage schedules. Typically, most of our employees, we do that through collective bargaining process, but those who, non-union employees and managers are not in a union, so it's up to the board to determine the rate. I'm recommending a 2.0% general salary increase for next year, fiscal year 20, which is consistent with the, the other agreements that our employees have and is properly budgeted for. There's classification that sometimes crops up. I, I've pointed out, and I want to confirm, that the town is overdue in doing a comprehensive review of this schedule of employees. We actually had it funded, but in the transition of the HR department, we have not been able to implement that. And so, we've been very judicious and cautious about making recommendations and classification as the study is ready to go forward. But there are times when there are some very apparent issues. And in this year, for example, we are recommending that the board author, approve my recommendation that all of the four division managers in the Public Works Department be at the same grade. Right now, they are at different, two are at one grade, two are at another grade. We believe that that's, has, the distinction between those positions is no longer valid, and they should all be graded at the same rate. That's the only classification change we have. That's not to say that we don't think that there are areas that our consultant will identify. In fact, we're sure of it. We, we, last time we did a comprehensive study like that was in 2007, before my time. But we need to do that, and we're certain that there is going to be changes in classification that come by because positions have evolved, technology has evolved, or other factors. But, so I just want to assure you and assure the department heads and managers that that is underway, or that will soon be underway. And then finally, if there's any changes in benefits, we have, over the last couple of years, caught up on that, and we've made a lot of recommendations to modify, maybe add or reduce benefits to be more consistent. We don't have any of those this year, but there is a unique situation going on that I've tried to explain. It's kind of complicated, but just give me a couple of minutes to try to explain what's going on here. Our departments and, and managers in this, in this classification schedule enjoy a benefit for many, many years, this town has for decades, where town, these employees are allowed to buy back their unused vacation time up to, up to a certain amount. And for, ever, ever since this program has been in effect, that compensation that's received has been considered eligible for pension calculation. In other words, it's compensation for the purposes of calculating what your future retirement benefits will be. Last, last year, there was some litigation brought, and it was determined, at least preliminarily, that that would no longer be considered compensation for the purposes of calculating retirement. And that put at least two of our long-term department heads in a very tough spot, where they were actually planning on retiring and had calculated what their retirement benefits would be, and made very important life decisions based on that information. And so, we would like to address that by essentially converting what was formerly known as vacation buyback to a, a benefit called a career retirement incentive program to take care of that issue. But I want to be clear about that, that there is some corrective legislation, and there is this underlying litigation that's going on. And once that's resolved, I will come back to this board and we'll put it back together the way it should be. But for now, I'm making this recommendation to take effect this year, and for members who, who are in that category I mentioned, 25 years or more, we would apply that retroactively. There would be no additional costs. It's cost neutral. It's really just a way to deal with this, this situation that's cropped up, and I'd be back here probably by next year addressing it again. And that's it. I have proposed votes on the final page, and happy to answer any questions. Melissa Goff is here to assist me with that.
Any questions? Okay, let's vote.
So you could refer to page 13A if you wanted to, Mr. Chair, or you could read them. It's up to you.
Let's see, it's 8:15. I'll read them.
Read them, read them.
Should we vote on individually? I think we should probably share. I, I move to approve the annual appointment of department heads and other management personnel for fiscal year 2020, as recommended by the town administrator, and is appearing on attachment A. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. To approve wage adjustments of 2% effective July 1, 2019, for positions on the department head pay plan, the mid-management professional technical pay, pay plan, and for other non-union positions as recommended by the town administrator, as appearing in attachment C. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. To approve, move approval of a change in classification for the positions of director of highway and director of parks and open space from D5 to D6. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Finally, move to reduce the current vacation leave program for employees in the D plan with 10 or more years of service from five weeks to two weeks, and to eliminate the companion vacation leave buyback program to establish in its place a career retention incentive program that will pay management employees with over 10 years of service to the town three weeks of compensation. Said program shall be implemented on July 1, 2019, except for management employees with 25 or more years of service, which shall have the program implemented retroactively to July 1, 2018. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Can I make one more comment? It doesn't affect your vote, but, so in order for this to be legal, it has to be nondiscretionary. Right. Heard about that today. But there has to be discretion, it cannot be discretionary. An employee doesn't have any choice. So by going down to two weeks of vacation, even though you're paying them the three weeks, you know, I've heard from some folks who want to make sure that there can be some accommodations. And I'm, I'm pretty confident, especially given the fact that this will probably be going on for one year, or we're going to reevaluate it after a year, that I can make certain adjustments and accommodations to deal with those things. I just wanted to be aware. I committed that to those few employees today, and I wanted to mention that publicly as well. Thank you.
I, I would just like to add that I fully support the 2% wage increase, and we are a board of people who believe in progressive values, and although these are management-level employees, they basically are working people and people who keep our town running, and we should recognize that and appreciate it by what is a relatively modest pay increase, but something that says to our employees that we appreciate them, and that we're going to express that through a 2% pay increase.
Thank you.
When was the last time we used the weaver of coal?
You're not supposed to be using coal.
You know, there are many things that are done here by tradition, and sometimes I just keep doing it.
So a measure of wooden bark, so that town meeting...
Yeah.
...law and article actually is relevant to the, the position of two people. These are not paid positions, I take it?
They're just add-ons to a person's...
Since fewer.
I'd like the keeper for lockup.
Well, that's important still, right?
Hopefully, I never have interactions with the keeper of the lockup.
So next, boards and commissions appointments. Question of making appointments, reappointments to the following boards and commissions, Indigenous Peoples Celebration Committee, Advisory Council, and Public Health. You going to read the names?
Sure, I will. There's, for the Indigenous Peoples Celebration Day Committee, there's only one additional applicant for your consideration, and I'll, I'll state the name, and you'll say aye if you want to appoint. Felina Silver Robinson.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Miss Robinson's appointed. And then on the Advisory Council and Public Health, and I, we have two reappointments, and in our effort to try to get this committee appointment process expedited, we decided at least temporarily not to have to interview incumbents. And so, there's two incumbents that are, whose appointments are ready to be reappointed. That's Dr. Peter Moyer.
Aye.
Gretchen Stoddard.
Aye.
And then there's one vacancy, and we have one applicant, David Hemmenway.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much.
No further business. Meeting adjourned.
Eight, one, good.
Good.